Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll?
Trustee Guyer?
Here.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Baumann?
Here.
President Brawley?
Here.
And trustee Youngerman?
Here.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And trustee Betzinger is not here.
Nobody ever calls my name, thank you.
All right, we do have a call this evening, I'll move on to our public comment, or public participation. So the public comment is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any topic for two minutes. And is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the board? All right, hearing none. I know that we probably have some people on the Zoom. And we also had something submitted, go ahead.
Yes, I received two emails today for public comment, but one of the commenter said they would be online virtually to share their comments, so if you want to go ahead, we can start with that one.
Certainly. Yeah, so is there any member, or any, anybody on the Zoom that wishes to make public comment? Please raise your hand.
Should move them over. You can go ahead, sir.
Are the speakers on? They should be.
Is your mic on over there?
You know what, sir, hold on just a second, if you are talking, we cannot hear you. Just give us a second, we'll figure it out.
Rob? Try talking again, Rob, I think I can hear you.
No.
Not even with volume?
We're working on it, Rob.
I left, bless you.
Sorry, Rob, hang in there.
I don't think it's going to show up unless, the last time I had this happen, I had to restart.
Is there a way he can? Can we chat with him? Because I can, I can have my speaker.
Something says this happened to her before, she had to restart the computer to get it, get to the sound that we need, so we can do that if you want, or I can read his comments into it.
And she, and she's.
Then we could restart everything, like everybody's.
He's all frined up.
He says perhaps someone can read my email, because I can do that if he wants. Let me if he's good with.
Hello, this is Rob. I'm here myself, myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, little audio problems.
Sorry about that.
That's quite all right, I'll use my, thank you for letting me speak, I'll be brief. My only statement was basically a quick update on the Mayfield closure. I'm the resident that lives two houses away from the recent partial closure. Just wanted to make some general statements, and the purpose of my comments is, of these statements is that I would, would request, I don't know if that's within your power, as much police presence as we can get to help get this off the ground, because that seems to be the issue. But generally, the traffic has been decreasing quite a bit, as per my observation. However, still quite a few cars are not heeding the signs all the way along Mayfield and making it all the way to the very end, to my, to the closure right by my street. Of those cars, quite a few of them do turn around. Unfortunately, most of them turn around using either my neighbor's driveway or my driveway, which is okay for the time being. The bigger concern are, we are starting to see an increase of vehicles that are just basically ignoring the closure altogether. The police truck is now gone, and the cones are gone, and people are not only blowing through the portal, but they're actually doing so at regular speed, they're not even slowing down. So I would almost argue that the situation is even more dangerous than it is without the barriers there. So, again, those are the basic observations, I apologize, I don't have strict numbers, I don't sit and tally the cars every single day, so I don't have actual data, I'm just going purely by my observations. But I would say that the police presence has helped a lot, that really gets the word out there to their residents and people going through that it's not tolerated. So that's my only statement to this board. I would think that this is too early, after only about a month, to make any kind of standard statements of anything at all, I just wanted to give a quick update as to what I've seen, and basically implore the police as much as they possibly can to continue to get the word out and be out here and ticket and watch the situation, and that's it. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Rob, appreciate it. And I think our second public comment is kind of along the same lines.
Yes. So I received a comment from a Megan Kelly, she did not give her address, but I will read her comment to you. "Good evening, I would like to express my concerns on the road closure at Mayfield Drive. While traffic volume and speeding has dropped significantly, I am still very concerned and scared by the amount of people that continue to drive through the barriers at a speed higher than the posted 25 mile per hour limit, or through the barrier at all. The barrier is right in front of my house, I see all day long people blowing through it like it's not there. I am hoping there can be some way to fix this. I was told to call Montgomery Police Department every time I saw someone go through, that would be a lot of phone calls throughout the day. We know police cannot be here all the time, but we also feel helpless because we are starting to see the same cars all day long driving through, and those people think it's a joke. Most of them don't even slow down anymore, we have been very grateful for the results we have seen so far. Now if we could just weed out the bad apples, we would finally have a safe place for our children to live and grow. Thank you for your time."
I'm going to address this comment. She sent me an email, or a message yesterday, along with some video, and in the video, I believe it was her husband was out in the street videoing vehicles as they were going through this barricade. And so she sent me the video, and I said, "What's concerning to me is the fact that we've got residents out in the street videoing people going through this barricade." I said, "You need to call Montgomery PD and let them handle it." And so she told me that, basically told me that this hasn't helped at all, the barricade has not helped at all. And so I reiterated, "You need to contact the police department, because they need record of this, they need record of these vehicles going through this." And earlier, in intergovernmental, I received a message from a resident that lived in Lakewood Creek that apparently there was an accident in Orchard Colina, or somewhere in that general area, and there were vehicles being rerouted. And so, forgetting, she had gone down Mayfield, but her son started to have a seizure. And so, she was dealing with her son, and obviously priority is son, and so she went through the barricade. And, once again, it's the same home, which is out videoing. And so she texted me, or sent me a message and said, "Hey, I'm afraid that I'm going to get a ticket." And I said, "You're not going to get a ticket, because we'll speak with the chief. If it's a medical emergency of something like that, go through the barricade, do what you need to do, because safety is, the safety of someone's going through a medical emergency is more important than going around." But, what Megan said in this comment is exactly the opposite of what she told me yesterday. And I took that message, and I forwarded that whole message to the chief, so he's well aware of this.
Thank you. And I know this is a process, I know we spent a significant amount of public works time, staff time here at Village Hall, and of course, police time in setting this up, and doing the enforcement, and we'll kind of see how things go over the next, you know, bit here. I'm sure that the chief has a plan for how he's enforcing that, he's also got to temper that with the needs of the entire village, but this is a situation that we obviously are very serious, seriously into, and we've been working on for a while, so thank you. All right. Before we move into the bulk of the meeting, I should have done this at the beginning of the meeting, but I didn't. I would like to entertain just a brief moment of silence. Over, I guess, last week, we lost a member of our community here, Dale Van Duser, who has been running the video since before I was even involved, ten years. So it's a man that we saw every, at every meeting, he came up, he had his sports opinions, hearing his chuckles, you know, anytime somebody would say something too stupid for the meeting. But I'm going to miss hearing him, he definitely was dedicated part of our team here, and he will certainly be missed if anybody else has anything else to add.
I just, I mean, Dale's, again, you could hear him laugh up there when Steve or I or somebody would say something, you could hear him chuckle back up there, and he would just laugh. And, again, he was just a great member of the community for being at Montgomery Fest all the time, helping out, working in the craft booth with his wife, and just, again, an avid member of our community. And he's going to be missed, because he was def, he was a character, to sum it up. He was, Dale was a character, and he knew he was a character, and he didn't hesitate to let you know he was, so I will miss him.
He was a member of the team, and I've been on various teams, with village-related teams, for 14 years, and he was here a long time before I ever got here. And, you know, he was a member of the team, and he was my friend, and I'm very sad that he's gone. I'm going to miss, he and I would give each other a hard time all the time, and I remember when we drove around that night, you know, with your son and Dale, when all the rioting and stuff was going on, and the police were situated in various things, and we were kind of driving around, thinking, what is, kind of figuring out what was going on, and he was with us, and you know, we got to spend some time with them and talk to them a lot, and we're really going to miss him.
So with that, our hearts are with his family, you know, if they need anything, obviously they know there's a village here, you know, to help them through this. So with that, I entertain just a moment of silence, a brief moment of silence for him. Thank you. All right, I will read the consent agenda and then entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the Village Board Meeting of August 9th, 2021, accounts payable through August 19th, 2021, request for a waiver of temporary liquor license fee for the VFW Rolling Thunder event, request for a waiver of temporary use fee for the same event, and the last item, ordinance 1895, amending the village code, this is for Speedway at 2110 Orchard Road.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
I carries 5-0, thank you. All right, under items for separate action, the first item is Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation on Fence Heights in Residential Districts. This is a standing item on our agenda.
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
Okay, so as you, I'm sure all recall, we had a resident approach the board about reconsidering the fence height regulations that were adopted as part of the UDO earlier this spring. The board decided after some discussion, after staff brought some information, to go ahead and have the Planning and Zoning Commission discuss regulations that would allow a six-foot fence on our residentially zoned lots. So at their August meeting, that's what we did. So staff presented some language for a text amendment that would allow for six-foot fences, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed it, and did recommend to you the language that staff proposed. This would allow a six-foot fence in all of our residential districts, in the interior side and rear yards, and it would allow a six-foot fence on a corner side yard, only if it was a minimum of 10 feet setback from the corner side lot line. And the idea behind that is for both safety, as well as for aesthetics, along the street frontage of our roads. So after some discussion, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that language to you. You do have a copy of what the actual text amendment language would look like there in your packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission, while not necessarily fond of six-foot fences, did not necessarily feel that they needed to be prohibited, and so they were comfortable with the language that was in there. I would say that I did provide some kind of diagrams to kind of show where a six-foot fence could go in the corner side yard, just for some reference, so if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer that. Other than that, the next steps would be that if you are okay with this particular language, we would move forward with a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is required for text amendments. So this would move forward to the October Planning and Zoning Commission further public hearing, and then would come back to you for ordinance adoption, and if you're comfortable with that, we could waive first reading and get that adopted then at the first Village Board meeting in October. The text amendment, we would like to kind of couple some cleanup items from the UDO with it, just some typos and other things that were kind of missed, that need to kind of be cleaned up in the UDO along with that, to try to get it all done at one time. Again, text amendments do require a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then come before you for approval.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a way for us to make sure that this is communicated? Because I can just picture people that live in Lakewood Creek that has an HOA that allows a four-foot fence, to read this and say, "Well, the Village Board said we can have a six-foot fence now." And then they install one. So is there a way for us to make sure that we communicate that this does not supersede your HOA? That those, you know, again, I just want to be able to make sure we have great communication.
Right, and we will continue to communicate, as we always have, that HOAs have their separate rules, and that residents need to abide by those, and we do have a list, you know, that my assistant keeps at her desk, so she knows which subdivisions, which areas do have HOAs, and what those restrictions are, so she can let the residents know when they do submit their applications.
Okay.
That, so.
And you do that at the time when someone comes in to ask for a permit, correct? Is when you, is when someone comes in to ask for a permit, then you tell them your subdivision has a HOA restriction, just to make it clear, right? So if somebody does it on their own without a permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on them.
Yeah.
Ultimately, it's on them, yes.
Yeah.
We spoke at the last Plan Commission about perhaps moving this process along a little faster. What is the lead time for the public hearing? Is it a 30-day notice for a public hearing, or?
It's a minimum of 15 days, no more than 30 days, notice in the paper before the meeting.
I know that the resident that I had spoken with and that had come before us, she's had a deposit in with the contractor since February, and I was really hoping we could speed this up a little bit more, so, you know, now she's waiting the whole year. My concern is, she gets to a point, and maybe she can't put the fence in this year, and they still have her deposit.
So I did speak, she actually reached out to me last week, so I did speak with her and let her know that we were probably on track to a mid-October approval, and she was happy with that, so she was going to contact her fence company.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I would agree with trustee Spurling, if there's any way for us to speed that process up, and even shorten it by a couple weeks, I would like to do that as well.
And the, yeah, the Plaid Commission date is set, so it's really just a matter of when we publish, it's on that next meeting, and.
I mean, when it comes to you guys, you would have the option of approving on first reading.
Yeah, we would queue it up that way, if we didn't want to.
So that would save two weeks.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Do we need a little motion to?
I don't think so, do we need, or we do need a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Item B this evening, ordinance 1824, approving a final plat of Ricky Rocket subdivision, which isn't for Ricky Rockets, don't be confused. And this is a waiver of first passage on the second reading. Sonia?
Yes, so, as you know, it's not actually Ricky Rockets going there anymore, now it's going to be Gas and Wash, however, that's the name that's on the plat that was submitted. So you did approve the preliminary PUD and plat back in 2019, when you were reviewing Ricky Rockets. They have submitted their final plat, and we've been reviewing it, and we do recommend approval of it. It's in substantial compliance with the originally approved preliminary plat. We do have it subject to the following condition, which is satisfaction of outstanding comments raised by the village engineer, and it's August 16th correspondence regarding the Gas and Wash at Orchard and Jericho Road's second final engineering review, as pertaining to the final plat of subdivision. So the ordinance before you does have that condition included. We do have the property owner and the engineering company on the line, if we have any questions for them, but given our lack of audio, I'd suggest we don't have any questions, and hopefully I can answer, if you can, any that you have.
Awesome. Any questions for staff? All right, hearing none? Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
I carries 5-0. Rolling right along, ordinance 1926, authorizing a study of the feasibility of establishing a tax increment allocation financing to stimulate new economic development around Blackberry Creek. Super awesome title there. Montgomery Tiff District number four, waiver first passage on the second. Sonia?
Yes. Apparently I get paid by the word. The owners of the property located on the west side of Orchard Road, generally between Ockut and Route 30, have petitioned for annexation to the village, and as part of that petition, they're requesting a Tiff incentive to help with the development of that site. To establish that Tiff district, we'd have to do an eligibility study, and that must be undertaken if the study area is to determine if it's eligible pursuant to Illinois state statute. As you may recall, back in 2012, we went out for an RFP for a Tiff consultant, and we chose TESCA Associates to study the Orchard Road corridor, Tiff number two. Since we already have a relationship with them, we have moved forward with them for this eligibility study for Tiff number three, which is the Caterpillar Drive Tiff, so we're requesting to move forward with them again. They have provided us with a proposal of a not-to-exceed fee of $18,000 for the study. This would be for both the eligibility study and for the redevelopment plan, if it does meet eligibility. Once the ordinance is adopted, each taxing district that would be affected by the designation will be notified by certified mail of the study. Please note, though, that since we are waiving going out for an RFP for this, this does require a supermajority vote of the Village Board.
Any questions? You can see the property here, it's odd that one of the parcels we own, isn't that weird?
Well, I was strategic in that.
I get it.
Because there is.
That'll be lumped in with.
There is some realignment with the road there, so just to include that parcel, to kind of make any improvements there, could be eligible for the Tiff funding as well.
Gotcha.
As, as we begin this process, I'm going to remind people, again, that this affects other taxing bodies, and it affects the fire protection districts significantly, and as we go through this Tiff process, there, if, as things develop, and there are uses that come into these Tiffs that have, they may require special equipment, or that sort of thing, for firefighting, and for that sort of thing, that, that needs to be worked out, and also, there's also a cost, because just like the village has a, has a vehicle replacement program, the fire protection districts have a vehicle replacement program. So there should probably be some sort of monies going to their vehicle replacement programs, to make sure that they have, because as these develop, it's going to put stress on the fire protection districts, and they've got to stop taking money out of their vehicle replacement funds for, for people. Because it's really hamstringing the fire protection districts, and so, once again, as we create these Tiffs, and I'm sorry, chief, but the Tiffs are going to happen, but we've got to figure out a way where we're not, we're hurting him as little as possible, that fire protection district, whether it be in Oswego, Sugar Grove, wherever it is, if there's equipment needs, and replacement equipment needs that need to be taken care of, they need to be Tiff eligible.
Any other comments?
Is this annexation for the purpose of wholly commercial, industrial, do we know?
I think there might be some light manufacturing potential.
No residential?
There is potential for some residential, some attached, single-family or multifamily, higher-density residential they were looking at potentially.
Do we know where in this?
I think they were focusing it more, I would say, on the west half, so between the creek and the western property line, as I recall from the preliminary concept plans we've been looking at.
But we haven't seen the annexation agreement yet, right?
We've been working on it, so we've kind of had to rehash it since we've adopted the UDO, so it's in yet another draft form at this point.
So the idea is that we would approve and get a Tiff study started, but we couldn't, kind of like with Caterpillar, we can't approve one without the other, right?
Correct.
Be in the village.
Moving forward, I would never be in support of a new residential alongside an unincorporated residence, as we do on the far west side of the village. For instance, our backyards that back up against unincorporated areas that burn smoke heavily throughout the fall and spring. So I wouldn't do, I would not support anything along this, which direction we go on, the southern portion of this area here for residents, and put any new residents in that part of that type of situation. Otherwise, I would, in favor of moving forward.
Like a motion?
Set a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion on this? All right, we do need a supermajority. All right, go ahead.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Super.
Trustee, or President Brawley, are you voting on this one?
I don't think I need to.
Okay.
We're good. But I could, all right, so 5-0. All right, item D this evening, and thank you, order of a contract to United Meters for water meter replacement. This is the labor to install in the amount of $596,800. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So in July of this year, staff released an RFP for the labor to install water meter replacement throughout the village. August 5th was the bid opening date, in which two bidders submitted completed final packets. United Meters. United Meters was the inherent low bidder at $596,800. The RFP is identified to be taking place in four separate phases throughout the next four fiscal years. Therefore, staff is recommending the approval of the apparent low bidder. One thing I did want to clarify too as well, is there are additional bid items that are identified in the RFP and those would have to be agreed upon by village staff before any of those would take place. Phase one of the project that would take place this year is to be identified in the Boulder Hill subdivision. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
So, their cost to install, let's say, one is $140 per home, let's say. And that was, isn't that about what the meters themselves cost?
So, in this contract, the, this is just the labor to install. So, the furnishment of the actual meters is, is completed by the village.
Right, which we did, we approved that maybe three months ago.
Yep, meter costs are about 120 per unit. And then, there's 120 to 125, I believe it is, for the transponder unit, the MXU.
Cool. Okay.
Why was their estimate off $18,000?
We believe it's due to some of the labor crisis that's going on right now that it tweaked the, the numbers a bit higher than some of the input that we got when we established the budget.
Almost 9%.
I have a couple of questions also.
Sure.
Boulder Hill is going to be where you start. What, do you have a date of when you're going to start this meter replacement?
So, one of the issues that we have is we're still currently waiting on some of our additional meter supplies that'll get us through the remainder of the year, but we do have enough to get started. So, obviously, once we get final documents signed for the contract and insurance information and everything that we need, we'll be looking to start right away because we believe we have enough inventory to, to get rolling. So, we'll start the education process here very soon as far as getting the word out to residents of what to expect, as well as there's information that we'll need from the contractor, such as police department running background information and then providing identification badges. So, there's, there's a few steps. So, my estimation is it'll probably take about a month before we get actually rolling out and, and starting appointments.
So, will they be contacting the residents themselves for the appointments and stuff?
Correct.
So, it's going to be pretty much hands-off for us?
Correct. The RFP states that, that the contractor has to basically contact the residents and property owners to, to make the appointments.
And this over the four-year period, it covers 4,100 meters. Is that all the meters or are we going to be doing some of these in-house also?
So, there, there are additional meters that will be done in-house. For instance, this year, there's 500 meters identified in the budget that'll be performed by public works staff.
Okay. What's going to happen to the old meters? Do we get those back or do they keep them?
No, we get every meter back. Every meter must be returned as identified in the RFP back to the village. Number one, we want to hang on those for any meter discrepancies between residents and the, the final billing that would take place. So, we'll be hanging on to those. We also have an interest in testing some of those meters. We want to see what the accuracy rating is on those, so we get a general idea of any type of areas where we may have seen issues with water meters.
Plus the scrap value.
Plus the scrap value.
Yeah, which is quite a bit. The last time we did it, I think we got about $12,000 and there was probably a quarter of the meters that we have now. The additional bid items, can you just real quickly kind of go over those items? And, you know, what each item is and when they may come into play?
So, yeah, perfect example would be, so the remote radio transmitter cable for meter. So, sometimes we have instances where we lose communication between the unit that communicates to our drive-by unit and actually gives us the read. So, in an instance where they went in and we had what we call a won't work, where essentially won't send us a signal, they identify that that cable is bad, that's outside the base bid. So, then there would be the set amount of, as you see, $70 to pay for that. Service calls would be something where essentially we would be understaffed with public works where we would ask them to complete a service call that we would typically do ourselves. So, again, don't really see that coming into play too often, but if we needed to, it's, there is an additional bid item. Reprogramming of a water meter could be an instance where we go in and there is, say, the brand that we're using is Sensas Eye Pearl. Village has been installing Sensas Eye Pearl meters for about, oh, eight years. So, some of those meters were originally installed to read to the hun, I'm sorry, the hundred gallon increment. So, we are now reading down to the single gallon increment. So, that's an instance where the contractor goes in, the Eye Pearl meter is already installed. So, they'll reprogram that meter so we get better interval data to be able to calculate any potential high-water bill issues sooner. And it also correlates too to us going to our, you know, the next step of this program, which is our fixed base, fixed base reading system. Moving along, replace interior shut-off valve. So, this is something that we looked at, even though the village doesn't hold responsibility for the internal shut-off valves of the home. This is in the event that one is inoperable when they go in, that we would just replace it. We found that the program, we talked to several different communities. They've had different approaches and that was the consensus that we got, was that it's more efficient to just move forward, pay for that initial reinstillation of, or replacement of the shut-off valve. So, you see that cost there. And then, the installation of a jumper wire in the event that there was a new meter installed, which there shouldn't be, and there was no jumper wire installed at that time. Because otherwise, the jumper wire is incorporated in the base bid of the installation of the new meter.
I have a question. That replacement of the interior shut-off valve, that includes the cost of the valve?
Correct.
And the installation?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question, and I'm just thinking. If we're going to spend $596,800 on essentially labor to replace the meters in our, our village or wherever we provide water, does it make sense to hire public works employee to do this work?
So, when we look at this, there would be obviously the additional wages, but then would also come vehicle and other equipment that we would have to incur. So, at the end of this, given that we can capitalize and finish this project within four years, mind you, again, we're doing some of it already with internal staff. We'd felt that this was more effective in order to hit the timeline. Because you've got to remember that these contractors, there may be four to five different employees per day doing appointments. So, if we wanted to keep up with that type of schedule, then that would mean we would have to hire more than one public works employee. And again, for each public works employee would be another vehicle that would have to go with that as well.
And I'm sure you looked at what it would take to do this in-house, how long it would take, how many man-hours it would, and it would be significantly longer.
Correct.
Because, just because generally speaking, public works is understaffed. I mean, relative to the size of the village at this point. And I don't want to, I don't want to get you into that.
I'll refrain.
At the time, I've, I've been in town, this is going to be our third meter replacement. And it's always been the same story, is look to do it in-house. And it's just, when you take the time and the labor and...
Had we hired a guy two times ago, he'd be really good at it by now.
No, he retired and he's sitting right there, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, and I think the last time we did it, it was $70 a meter. And that was, geez, 20 years ago or something.
I remember that, actually.
Yeah.
Because my parents got a new meter in the basement. It was weird when I was a kid. All right, any other questions for Mark or staff? Is there a motion?
One second. Doug, I didn't hear your question, Director Wolf. Can you say what the question is?
The shut-off valve, the, the replacement interior shut-off valve, was that cost inclusive of the cost of the valve? And yes, it was.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second. Any further discussion?
All right, call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. All right, item E this evening is Resolution 2021-013, authorizing the application for and use of American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. You guys are having so much fun with these titles today. So, with that, Attorney Julian, thank you.
So, this is more or less a housekeeping item to become eligible to receive the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. So, this resolution type would approve the application and then subsequent use to the state. It is for COVID-related expenses because the village is a, has a population of under 50,000 people. It's a non-entitlement community, which means that the funds are based on population. So, I believe the amount that you're eligible for is 2.7 million. And Justin, you can correct me if that's wrong. I think it's slightly under. All right. So, yeah, with that, this is just the application and then subsequent use, which would have to be for COVID-related expenses as defined by the act.
All right.
So, is this one of those things that if we don't use it, we have to give it back?
If you do not apply for it, you won't get it at all. But yeah, it's only for eligible expenses, so you're allowed up to that amount, but it has to be for things that qualify.
So, we're going to find things that qualify then. Okay. Thank you.
There's a lot of water main that needs to be replaced. Believe me, we'll, we'll spend the two seven.
Is there a motion?
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thanks. All right, moving on. Items for discussion this evening, only one is property tax rebate. Who's taking that one?
I'll start and I'll let Christina jump in if she feels the need. So, the timeline, the registration on timeline for the property tax rebate in the past has been that we send out a separate mailing sometime between the beginning and middle of September. And then, from there, we have it due to us by December 15th. There was a discussion, discussion between staff, looking at the process itself, how we could make it easier for residents and so forth. And so, what we looked at was instead of sending a completely separate document in September, that we would include a note with the October water bill. That note in the October water bill would reference a location on our website that residents could actually go to and fill out a form. That form would automatically be submitted to the village rather than us getting all the hard copies and so forth. And then, we would move the due date on that to December 31st. So, still giving, giving residents the same amount of time. And then, as stated, we were looking at having the application be online, but we would have hard copies at the village hall if someone so requested that we could actually provide to them rather than them filling out something online.
Will it also have a printable format online? Like you could, if you chose for the hard copy but didn't want to come down and pick one up, would you print it?
You could. In our, in what we met with staff and discussed is how we could provide a higher level of customer service. One of the issues that we've run into the past is the way the forms are filled out. They don't always match, and so, a lot of staff time is spent trying to figure out if, you know, it matches exactly the tax bill or if the renter, you know, got the water bill for some reason is filling it out and how we can match those. So, by online, the goal is to get the residents to fill it out with their tax form in hand first, so they're prepared. We'll also be including contact information for Oscar as well, for anyone who has questions. That way, then he'll be the point of contact because it's in staff's best interest to get that accurate information upfront. If anyone wants to come in or call in, staff will assist them through the process right then and there so we can make sure that it's accurate in the system before they even leave village hall. But yes, I mean, essentially, they could print it out and bring it in and, or call it in and we would be able to help them through that process.
So, if I don't have internet, I'm, I'm saying I'm older and I don't have internet. I can call and request a copy or have someone help me. Okay.
Absolutely.
So, if you do it online, is there going to be an automatic response that lets the people know that it was received?
Yes, I believe, yeah, we can set it up that way. Also, online this year, it will give them exact information on where to reference in their tax bill. So, it should be a little bit more user-friendly in how to fill it out, making sure the name matches on their tax bill, which should match what we have, that the property ID number is accurate on there, as well as they'll have the option. We have seen in the past that some of the checks from last year are not cashed yet. So, we're going to give residents the option to either take the credit on their water bill or a paper check. So, they'll have that option. And I believe that's just because nowadays, you cash your check on your phone or, you know, we're not always used to going for paper. So, I think we're going to assist in making that an easier process in total and essentially saving money on mailing and the paper trail as well.
And save staff time, you know, inserting all the information. As much as we can streamline the process, the better. It's good to see that, the data that, that Justin had sent me over the weekend was that we're knocking on the door of almost 50% of eligible households are receiving the rebate. That doesn't, for a couple of years, and it seems like we've pretty much leveled off at around 20, you know, 2,800-ish. I don't know if that's, that other folks just don't have any idea that we do this. I tend to lean more towards, some people just don't want to fill it out and don't want it. Like, I don't fill it out. I don't, don't get it. But, but I do like the program the way we have it, that you have to, that, we're just asking that you ask for it and fill out an application.
Will a button be on the front page of the website so that we don't have to? Like, will, couldn't there be a button that says property tax rebate, click and take you through?
Yeah, we'll try to do, we'll put it on the front of the website. We'll have it linked in all the social media posts. We'll include it. The good news is we gave an update in the August bill already that the process was a little bit amended. So, it'll be again in the October newsletter as well. We'll be able to put, you know, like an action, call to action, separate piece of paper in there with instructions. And then additionally, we'll have time in December with the December water bill to do another call to action to remind people. So, we'll be hitting people in additional time essentially.
Is now a good time for me to say I want to increase the property tax rebate?
No.
I think in about four years when we redo our road plan again?
No, I'm going to push to have it increased. The government is not a good spender of taxpayer money, so we're going to give it back to the residents.
Maybe not others, but I think this one's doing it.
We do better, we do better than most, but...
Steve, I would challenge you to say rather than increase it, just make it an automatic one-time deduction off everyone's water bill.
We've talked about that. And it's always been an opt-in, because some folks don't want it.
So, I have a question.
We did talk about that. I, my, my goal, and I'm going to be...
Next time, just keep going.
Yeah. I, I just was so thrilled I get to talk now.
Are, are you, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I wanted to say something.
Oh.
Chetis. So, Justin.
Yes.
With the anticipated streamlining with these changes, would you anticipate that the rebates would still go out at the same time or will that timeframe lengthen as well?
The time, buh, start over. The timeframe should shorten from what it was. We don't know how many people will go online versus, we didn't even announce it last year and we, we only got 39 online. So, people just saw it and were able to submit it online. So, we certainly hope that that number goes up drastically. As long as people are doing it online, that should be sooner that we could provide that to them. And as Christina stated, either on their water bill, which we haven't done in the past, or an actual paper check, so...
But that shouldn't cause that timeframe from the deadline to when the rebates go out. It shouldn't cause any change in that timeframe.
No. If anything, it will make it shorter.
Thank you.
It's, it's no secret that my goal is to eventually increase this to where we are rebating all of the homeowner's property tax back to them. I want to continue to increase this. We didn't increase it last year. And when I say increase it, I only want to increase it another 5%. It's 15 bucks. We just spent an extra eight, we just spent $596,000. We just spent an extra eight, we just spent $596,000 to replace water meters. We can certainly give 45 or 50,000 dollars back to the residents.
I mean, we could give as much as, as, as humanly possible, but when we don't rebate that, we put that to darn good use in rebuilding our roads.
We do, we do a great job.
Which we have a pretty good track record at. So I'm totally with you, I get it. And we talk, we talk about it, and I appreciate you bringing that up every chance you get. I get you.
You're very welcome.
I'm with you. All right, anything else on this? Excellent. Revisit, I want to see those numbers at the end of this, to see how many people did it digitally, so... Okay. With that, I have a couple of things for New Year Unfinished, so we're going to move on, there's no vote on that. Do you want to do the Facebook Live thing now?
Sure.
I'm going to come around though, so I can stand, so I don't look like, I don't look like I'm too short. So maybe before, did you already click that?
Nope, not yet.
Maybe before you do that, just for the benefit of those that are here, we're doing a, unless...
Do you want a microphone?
Yeah.
Do you need a handheld mic?
I was just going to do a quick Facebook Live drawing for a $100 gift card to Atravex for reading the newsletter, which kind of looks at... I read that. We're trying to encourage, there was a spot left open, and I suggested that perhaps...
I was excluded from being able to enter.
Yes.
Project, just project.
Yes. The microphone there. We're so tech savvy.
Okay. Perfect. All right, okay, Montgomery, so we're live here at, it's sounding like DJ, at the Village Board meeting, and just wanted to do the drawing. So as a board, we're working with staff on some big projects coming up in the village, and we want to encourage members of our community to not only read our newsletter, but also act when they see the newsletter. So this month, readers were encouraged to enter to win a $100 gift card to Atravex Conventions, located right here downtown Montgomery, right next to Village Hall. The owner, Jacqueline Mejia, graduated from the French pastry school of Kennedy King College in Chicago, and did her apprenticeship with King Hammer of Top Chef Just Desserts. Their pastries, macaroons, and coffee are phenomenal. We're grateful to have them and business of this caliber in our downtown. So we're going to draw the winner tonight of folks who submitted their name. It was, if you didn't see it, it was the last bit on our newsletter last month that said, "If you read this bar, send us an email." And so we had 60 residents that submitted their name to be chosen for a $100 gift card, and all the names are in here, I promise. And I would ask, I would ask our village attorney to draw a name out of here, draw the winner for this month. Thank you. All right, so we have Carla Hansen. We will be in touch, and congratulations. Put it to good use, and I know you'll enjoy it. Thank you.
I thought we were going to go on a little roller derby.
Right?
I guess I didn't read the whole thing.
Okay. Here's the winner. Don't put that back. All right. That's the last, I do have two more, but that's the last thing that I, and play DJ tonight. The, the one comment that I have is about Engineer Wallers. So he didn't know that I was going to mention this tonight, but as you know, he is a very accomplished engineer and advocate for Montgomery and all kinds of things. But just recently was selected by the American Society of Civil Engineers, the Illinois Division, so ASE Illinois, as Engineer of the Year for 2021. So congratulations. And then Jeff also notified me that you were water professional, what was it? At WaterCon? I know you're not going to correct us, but at any rate, we applaud you for being recognized, something that you never seek out in your, in the entire time I've ever known you, for the incredible work you do not only here, but for Joliet, for NWPA, for Metro West, for any bad bill that's introduced in Springfield on behalf of, you know, APWA, AWWA, American Society of Civil Engineers. So with that, congratulations.
Well deserved.
Okay, back to some business. Orchard and 30. So I'm surprised, I was thinking that Steve might bring this up. We made a request into, blanking on our state rep now. Yeah, Keith Wheeler submitted a request on our behalf to IDOT, kind of asking IDOT, what the heck is the status with the ultimate improvement for Orchard and 30? And then also request to reduce the speed limit. Both of those got denied by the state. They don't have funding for our full improvements, but honestly, any chance that we can remind them of how interested we are, and how big of a deal it is, and how we're tired of seeing crosses and flowers at that intersection, the better. So I tell you that to tell you this, that I also got an email from Pete last week that was the pre-final, which is almost as good as final, plans for the interim improvements for Orchard and 30. So if everything goes as planned, the interim improvements, which is adding a couple of turn lanes, south and east, and pedestrian improvements at the intersection, I believe, that would be let in January of '22, and I have no idea how long it would take.
Let in January of '20, oh, so soon?
This January, yeah. So do you have any idea how long that'll take? I know I didn't ask you, I'll tell you I was going to bring this up. It's more than a year's worth of work probably, right?
Yep.
Okay. So we're moving, I was excited to see the pedestrian stuff, because as you know, if you've, if you've driven through there, if you've run through there, biked, or all things that I've tried to do, there's a bike path that stops on the north side, there's a bike sidewalk that stops on the south side, and you're on your own in the middle. So this is really one step to making that a much safer intersection and easier to traverse for all of us, so... Those are the three things that I had. Anybody else?
Yes, I do. One thing I didn't have on my agenda was Debbie mentioned during Intergovernmental earlier this evening, the Cemetery Walk, which is an absolutely fantastic event that the village hosts every year. So I applaud anyone listening, watching, online. It is a fantastic event, and we're in dire need of some actors to do that, take on those positions. And having been an actor once, and been a guide several times, it's an absolute gas. It's a lot of fun to learn about a person that's here, and you basically learn their life story, and then you tell that life story as if you were that person. And it's not, you know, you don't need to have, be an actor and be on stage, but it's just a lot of fun to learn and then share with the community, and the people are so enthused and appreciative of it, that I would hate for that to not happen, because we can't field five or six actors to do it. So again, anybody out there in the community that has any experience or interest in that, please reach out to Debbie Buchanan. She's great at it. And I'm certain that Christina's typing frantically over here, I can see her in the corner of my eye, that she'll be posting something out on Facebook about that.
Charlie, did I see your ears perk up when he said actor?
And secondly is, I just want to give a quick recap for Montgomery Fest, we just came off of it, and thank you to everyone within the village organization, Public Works, PD, staff, the countless hours that go into hosting that event and doing it are beyond our comprehension. You know, we, we see a small percentage of what actually it takes to put that on for the weeks and months and year in advance. Mark told me that he talks to the Porta Potty people three or four times throughout the year to confirm and reaffirm that we have the date, because it would really be a bad situation if we didn't have that date. So those are things that happen behind the scenes that we, as a board, don't see or understand or necessarily appreciate, because we just don't know that they're going on. So I just want to make that, everyone aware of that. And again, the fest with the new configuration, the new layout went over really well, community was very responsive and supportive of it. I think that it was just, overall, we had great weather, people were interested in getting out of the house, so it was a very successful event. I do have a couple of things that I wanted to touch on, and one of those is, I would like to request staff, and I'm looking at you, Christina, that we do a formal RFP, as we were in the last year of our Carnival contract, that we do a formal RFP to see, we've had the same Carnival vendor for, I think, 20 years, and they're great, they're nice people, but it would be a good, top, good opportunity for us to look at and see what else might be out there and available. Not that we need to make a switch, but it would be nice to know the options. So if you can work on that, put that together, I would appreciate it. And other than that, I, again, thank you to everyone, thank you Steve for helping with the stage and running everything, and just everyone that came and supported, especially Tom Betzinger, who's not here tonight. He was all over me every day. When was the last time you had a bottle of water? When was the last time you went and sat down for 10 minutes? And just making sure that I didn't wake up at 3:00 in the morning with cramps like I did Saturday morning. So again, thank you to everybody for all the support and all the help with the, with the fest. So that's it for me.
Perfect.
I have a quick question for Director Wolf. When is the next street sweeping scheduled?
I don't have that in front of me right now. I'm trying to think of it, it should be next month, we do one in September, and then the last sweep will be in, I believe it's October is the last sweep. So it should have two more sweeps before season's complete, but I can, I'll confirm that and get it back to you.
Thank you.
All right.
Whoa. I never got a chance.
Hearing none?
I have a couple, I have a couple items.
He cut his mic like we talked about.
Earlier this week, or the week before, I know that the village of Oswego had created an ordinance regarding off-road vehicles, and I read it in the paper, and I, if, that goes over well for them, I'd like to adopt that here as well, because I think we've had some issues with off-road vehicles on streets here. If they're starting to enforce it, I think that may come into Montgomery and be more of an issue. So I'd like to look at that. I've asked this before, and I, I'd like to look at installing and making Lakewood Creek at Concord a three-way stop. I think that the, the way that the, the paths and the crosswalks, there are two identified as crosswalks, even though that there are four there. It's confusing, and it is one of the main points where kids will kind of come through, they're coming out of that naturalized area. And as you sit there and you're facing Concord, and you're waiting to turn either left or right, the vehicles that are coming down Concord are pretty quick, and so sometimes it's a little dangerous to pull out.
So you're asking staff to investigate the need for a stop sign?
Yeah, I didn't get my property tax rebate increased, so we're going to investigate the stop sign.
No, that's fine.
I think for the safety of the students, I've, I've thought about that and wondered about that for years, and with the number of car issues that there are with pickups and drop-offs, if there was a safer way to cross Concord from the neighborhoods that are at least on the other side, if that may alleviate some of those cars that pick up and drop off, if there was a safe crossing across Concord, because it does get dangerous through there.
And my last item, tomorrow we have a new U.S. citizen. My wife is taking the oath of office, or not the oath of office, but the oath of citizenship, and she'll actually be able to vote, so...
It's amazing what some guys will do to get a vote.
She, she may run against me at some point.
Congratulations, that's awesome. All right, hearing nothing else? Future meetings there, we're not canceling anything, are we?
No.
Perfect, so we're not going to take any action. You can see the future meetings, we don't have executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marasek?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Baumann?
Yes. And we're adjourned, thank you.
Did you second that down?